Let's call this meeting to order. John, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Genesis Zerker.
Mrs. Maureen.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Saleh is absent.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Saleh is absent this evening due to a family emergency. Moving on, we have some special presentations this evening. Chief, if you would come forward, please. The chief actually has a couple presentations slash recognitions to make, so the floor's yours, sir.
Yes, we'd like to recognize two members of the Division of Police for some awards and accomplishments they've had recently. First is Detective Scott Davis. Recently Detective Davis was recognized, what's your name? He was recognized recently by the FOP and the Crime Stoppers Organization for his work in the homicide from back in February, and also his work in the multimillion dollar Arch Schleester scam that was in the news over the last several months. So, he was recognized as their September Officer of the Month.
Yeah. And then this federal agent-looking guy over here, Lieutenant Steve Farmer, was recently graduated from the 250th, is that right?
Yeah.
250th session of the FBI's National Academy. The National Academy is a leadership and management course that the FBI puts on for law enforcement executives from all around the world. In fact, there was, there were law enforcement people from about 49 states and 24 countries, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And Steve graduated number one in his class.
Absolutely.
Well, that might be a little bit of an exaggeration, but it's a very, very great honor and we're very proud of him.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you both, Lieutenant Farmer and Detective Davis. Congratulations on both your achievements. Next up, we have a report from our recently appointed Dublin representative to the Central Ohio Transit Authority, and she is, that's Anne Bonham, I'm sorry, Bowman, I'm sorry. And she is joined this evening by the President and CEO of the Central Ohio Transit Authority, Curtis Stitt. If you'd both like to come forward.
Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to share with you, I-
Pour the mic down towards you, that's perfect.
This one. Okay.
Thank you. Give us your name.
My name is Anne Bowman.
Great.
And I wanted to share with you the information that I gained at the very first meeting that I attended representing the city of Dublin. And one of the things on the report that you have before you is that the Cota organization has asked that the Cota link be on the different city websites as information for those going to the city of Dublin website, that they are able to see a link to Cota for transportation, because we do have three express, one Crosstown and one local bus available. Also, they wanted to be sure that I notify the advisory board of the different events that are open to the general public, because Cota would like to be able to have their link also on those announcements and publications as a way to get to Dublin and to get to these events, such as the President's Cup and so on. The other thing is I wanted to share with you is that Cota is able to give presentations, have display booths, and also give you information for articles and newsletters or publications about Cota. So I wanted to share those things with you. And then I have also, just wanted to remind you that maybe you're not aware of this, I do have bags of information for all of you about all the Cota supplies and all their information. But I have, I just wanted to mention, one of the things when I'm talking to people about why aren't you riding the bus, they'll usually say, "Well, I need my car in case of an emergency with my children." So many people don't know about the guaranteed ride home. When you register for free and you take the bus, and if there's an emergency and they call you, Cota will pay four times a year, 90 percent of your taxi fee plus the tip for you to get home for that emergency because you rode the bus. And that is sponsored by the Ohio, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission is the one that sponsors this, this organization and this program. And I thought it was kind of an interesting thing, because this is the thing I usually have to talk to people about when it comes to, "Why don't you ride the bus?" Another thing I thought was kind of fun and kind of new is that there are buses down to the OSU home games. So if you want to avoid the traffic, you can take a Cota bus from a park and ride. They have the schedule right here, and I have it in your folders for you, in your bags. And they'll take you right to the game, drop you off, pick you up, and take you back to your car. Maybe Curtis would like to say a few words. Curtis?
Please. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Curtis Stitt. I'm President and CEO of the Central Ohio Transit Authority. And I just want to say that I'm, wasn't expecting to speak, but I'm happy. I'm, we're very pleased with your appointment of Anne to our advisory panel. Anne came in and she was very enthusiastic. I sat down in the first meeting that she attended as a member of the panel, and she spent about 20 minutes in my office afterwards, sharing some of her ideas and concerns. And I think she's going to be a very engaged and important part of our panel, our advisory panel. And I, from all my first impressions, she is going to serve this community very well, and we're pleased to have her as a member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stitt and Ms. Bowman, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to that portion of our agenda for citizen comments regarding matters not on this evening's agenda, Mr. Maurer, if you'd like to come forward, please.
I hate very much, and I'm embarrassed to tell you that sometimes, am I okay? Can you hear me? All right. Now I'll have to repeat what I didn't want to say in the first place. I hate to say, and I'm somewhat embarrassed to tell you, that sometimes when I enter the voting booth, I am woefully uninformed, particularly in presidential election, in the presidential election, because there are many names on the ballot, the identity of whom I am unfamiliar with. Now, I alluded to something last time I was up there, alluded to an enterprise called Project Vote Smart. Now there, this is people from all stripes, all political sides, all philosophical positions. A lot of them, many of them, all of whom have gathered out in the Rockies in Montana. And they spend thousands and thousands and thousands of hours collecting information on candidates, incumbents and candidates all around the country in the upcoming election. And they compress all of that in this little booklet, which is called Project Vote Smart: Voter's Self-Defense Manual. And this is a 2012 edition, and it is packed with enormous amount of information, for example, on, on candidates from president to local, on, oh, let me, I want to read it off to you. Here, campaign information, political courage test, campaign contributions. Sorry. I came up here soon and I thought I was going to be called. This is terrible. All right, contact information, votes, votes they've taken on issues, sources of campaign funds, rating agencies from gun shows to the whole range of people who would rate them. Now, it's all compacted into this little book, which has, which would take you 15 or 20 minutes to work, to understand, to see how to navigate in it. And it contains, compressed in it, thousands of man-hours and woman-hours of work. I would strongly recommend that you get it. It's very easy to get, it's free. You, on the internet, you go to votesmart, one word, V-O-T-E-S-M-A-R-T dot org, or on the phone, 1-888-VOTE SMART, and you'll have a copy sent to you free of charge. I strongly recommend it to you. You'll feel informed. Second, and not very important, I, as you know, I was sick for a few weeks, and I had to cancel, excuse me, had to cancel a concert over in Columbus. But I am working, I haven't started yet, I haven't practiced, and I have to get my piano finger muscularity back to speed and to sensitivity, and that, I don't know how long that's going to take. But when it does, if you are interested, I'll tell you the date and the place, and give you the night of your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer.
Point of order. I'm supposed to keep my leg elevated as much as possible. If I sit over here and pull one chair in front of me, may I raise my leg onto it?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Warren Fishman, 8577 Turnberry Court, Dublin. Being old, I get letters from residents when they don't know who else to send it to, I guess. And I got a letter which I forwarded to all your council members. And after I read the letter, and I felt obligated to make sure you all saw the letter, I felt that with the tone of the letter and, and the complication of how the letter was written, I thought that it would be a good idea to have the person that wrote the letter come and kind of present what he, his ideas in person to you. And I've always preached that to all my friends, how Dublin is the greatest place to live, that they don't have to preach it because they can see it, and how we're always on the cutting edge and so on. And so, Mr. Krausy, who's going to give this presentation, felt that this would help us be on the cutting edge. So, I'm going to let him present what he kind of wrote in the letter, but in more detail, and take his five minutes to give you an idea, because I think it's a fantastic idea if we can, if council can in some way pull it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, is it Krausy?
Yep.
If you'd like to come, Kraus?
Krausy.
Krausy.
Yes, I'm Eric Krausy, 8606 Kirkhill Court. Yes, I'm the one that wrote the letter, and gee, I didn't think this was going to be read by some of the council members, so I apologize on that, as directed to Mr. Fishman. I do want to thank you, though, for allowing me to speak, and I also want to thank you all for the service of time and energy you put into the city. My purpose in being here is to present ideas for two outdoor fitness features that I feel would be a great enhancement and benefit for all Dublin residents. I'm doing this because I have a wide range of interests in outdoor activities myself, but also enjoy helping others participate in those activities and expose them to those. The commit to be fit, heard that a lot, everything, but I know, we all know, it takes playing work and vision to create those opportunities for residents. Dublin City Council has done a wonderful job providing a network of trails, parks, and playgrounds for local residents, but that's not quite enough. Expanding on these facilities with additional fitness opportunities for young professionals, families, and individuals of all ages would be a smart investment. Unique outdoor recreation ideas will help keep Dublin on the cutting edge. And it's the fun factor that makes a difference. I don't know if you've seen the piano on the Fun Theory website over in Stockholm, they went ahead and, on stairway made into piano keys, so when you walk on them, it sounds like you're playing piano. People used to use the escalator before that. Now they're using the stairs. They changed the usage of that just by making it fun. And although my idea is a different activity, it's the very same concept by making things fun. So my first proposal is an outdoor climbing structure, and I say "structure" because you can see it's not made to look like a typical wall. This is actually molded off of walls up in New England, and is a picture down in Columbus. The picture on the right is the advertising that they use to show people from all over the country have been coming in to see what a great amenity this is. Over on the left, that's my son climbing up the wall. If you go down, almost any weekend, there's kind of a line waiting to use it. There's people of all ages. I've helped people from like eight years old to in their 60s and 70s use the wall, and every single person has thought it's a great amenity. So, and as I said, it does look like a pre-stained natural raw formation, so if you put it into a park like Glacier Ridge Park, it would look very natural and very good. As I was mentioning, I've helped various Dublin neighbors down there, again, they were from 80s, 70s years of age, and the one comment that they always ask or have is that, "Why can't we have something like this more accessible to Dublin residents?" It takes me about, it's almost 48 miles, it takes me quite a while to get down there, so I don't get down as often as I'd like. Well, that's the same with any of these activities. If it's not accessible, not available, you're not going to do it. So, also, by the way, Metro Parks, actually, when I talked with the manager down at that park, they said one of their actual goals on this was to attract young professionals and other people of all ages, make it usable for all ages to downtown. And they told me that's been a major success, and they've been promoting that as a reason to live downtown. So I know for certainty from what I've observed in about the approximately 12 times I've been down there this year for that and other activities down there, that it would be well-used and an important feature for this area. The second proposal will be an obstacle course that promotes fitness, and it would be designed for all residents to use. And I have just a real rudimentary design right here, details not filled in, but something I just observe, mothers, little babies, things like that at the park, other people trying to look for opportunities. But we don't have something, by the way, Metro Parks is going to be putting an obstacle course in down there. So unfortunately, after I wrote the letter a few, some weeks ago to Councilman Reiner, I just heard more recently that they are going to install an obstacle course to, again, improve fitness levels for downtown people. But I have a concept where people of all levels in the family, from a protected young child area, to something that's easy for young children, to a little bit older children, adults that are very fit, they could all simultaneously use at the very same time. And we've worked to try and make it a very natural proposal, taking some ideas from some of the residents, integrating them with the professionals, both at Metro Parks as well as here in the city of Dublin, on the staff, to make this really fit in, make it natural, natural elements, take from nature, and blend it into the Glacier Ridge Park. Glacier Ridge Park is quite large. A lot of people, unless they've been on, for instance, a bridle trail in the back, just do not see the extent of it right there. So, what I'm asking you to do is, when I say "commit to be fit," work to make it a reality, not just a slogan. And in summary, I'm proposing that the Dublin City Council employ a vision plain and necessary to add a climbing structure and an obstacle course to Glacier Ridge by partnering with Metro Parks. Every resident's voted to support the Metro Parks, let's fulfill that commitment by taking the steps necessary to make these improvements to the Glacier Ridge Park for the benefit of all of our residents of all ages. Completing the climbing structure and the course before the President's Cup in 2013 would provide visitors from all over the world yet another reason to say, "Wow, Dublin is a wonderful place to live." If any of you have not seen it, I'd be happy to actually take it down and show it to you. And also, whatever work I need to do to volunteer with Mr. Hahn or others, I'd be happy to do. I thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I would notice in your, one of your letters, you talked about how far it is to drive, and I think the concept when we first heard it, Ms. Krausy, was that it wasn't that we were against your ideas or didn't support them, it was that with the Met, with the Bridge Street Corridor, where we're encouraging people to walk, that maybe another place would be appropriate for it, such as our large Kaufman Park. So your ideas were, I think, well-received. It was the idea that where we might structure these would be in a place where people could walk to it and not have to drive so far away.
I think it'd be fabulous to have this in the core of Dublin, in the focal point where people could ride a bicycle, I mean, get around to shopping and things that way. The only reason I didn't suggest or propose that in this is that I've seen too many times municipalities are worried about liabilities and things like that with structures where people could get hurt. I've had several talks with Metro Park people about how they seem to have worked out or assumed that risk and have gone forward with it. So I just thought, thus, not reinventing the wheel, but maybe taking advantage of that, where they seem willing to partner and do these things. But I would actually prefer to see it within the city of Dublin, so it's the most accessible without having to always drive to things. I mean, I've spent a lot of time in European cities, Australian cities, where they make things that are really close, you don't have to use a vehicle. So I love that idea, and the only reason I didn't was because of the concerns, trying to project ahead to think about concerns you might have about liability and reinventing the wheel for what they've already done.
Which, you know, would go into our fit and healthy community style, was to encourage people not to get in the cars, but to be able to walk and bicycle there.
I absolutely agree with that.
So I think everyone received the ideas with a positive outlook, it was just where we would want to locate that.
Well, I think that's great, and the more central you can make it easier for all residents to access right there. One thing that City Council's done a great job is this network of trails, while I and most of the residents at least have some access to Glacier Ridge Park via the trail system, so that's why I wouldn't mind it being there, but I would prefer it to be actually in the core of the city, yes, that would be great.
Thank you.
You know, I wonder if, and I would agree with Kathy, that you, I think you did misinterpret some of our comments, because I didn't have anything to do with "not in my backyard," which you accused me of in the letter. I was the one that said I thought it was a grand idea, but the location seemed to be wrong.
Of course.
Because I do believe that Glacier Ridge is a fabulous passive park, and actually I do go there on a regular basis, even though I haven't run into you. But I'm wondering if this could be referred to Fred and to the PrAC group. We've talked a long time about relooking at our skate park area and whether that needed redevelopment, and whether there was other locations for skate parks or whatever, that we could look at this in combination, you know, with some of those ideas, too. And whether it's the expansion of Kaufman Park, or along the river, or in Bridge Street Corridor, I mean, I think that'd be great to have this broader discussion going on with our PrAC committee and the staff, and yourself and others who are really interested in what other, I mean, this is, these are two great ideas, but there's probably others, too, that, you know, you kind of throw them all together in the pot for discussion and what might meet the greater need of the community.
For me, the mayor apologized to you. I didn't think my comments in the letter, it was a reactionary comment to reading the article, and fortunately, the things that you just said now, we're not in the article.
Yeah, we never believe anything that's in the newspapers, comprehensive, yes.
That's true. But anyway, I did apologize, that was not to be directed.
Right.
I wonder if somebody could tell me if they know, and perhaps you do, who monitors the climbing activity, for example, here?
I've been down there all times of the day throughout the week. What happens is, you have a signed form that you're supposed to sign. Their claim is that since it's a free recreational thing, they don't have some liability issues, they want you to sign the form. Only on weekends, when it gets very busy, have I seen rangers occasionally go by and just look, and if they see somebody doing something really stupid, they'll come over. But most of the time I've been down there, it's actually self-policed by the various people. I mean, I've, somebody, gee, I think with one time when some people in this room were down there, some older professor from Ohio State University came over and said, "Oh, gee, I think you could do that a little differently," or something like that. And people, there's a camaraderie and a help. Well, in fact, I'll say, "Oh, so Mr. Fishman, when he climbed one section, the young people, old people, all at the same time started applauding when he did it." You find a lot of interest in health, promotion, safety, everything, all there. It's a really good group. I mean, I've seen hundreds of different people there in clusters, in pockets, sometimes four, pack ten, at times sometimes fifty or sixty would be there. But so far, the rangers appear to have let it be pretty well self-monitored and just during very intense times, will it be by to actually-
It's like there's lines there. Is it, is this free climbing, or is it, are there lines?
Part of the rules and regulations are that you're allowed to climb up to 12 feet above the structure without ropes, and those little blocks you see in the back are actually put there with little kids' space, they're little monkey bases for kids and stuff to use. So they're trying to encourage anywhere from five, six, seven years old on up larger. Now the requirement, so what they have you read and sign, is that anytime you're above that 12-foot stage, you have to be top-robed in, and you have to be able to demonstrate to a ranger all the proper techniques, and there's certain things, pieces of equipment you have to have in place. They, by the way, what, I'm sorry, if I can add, one other thing, they do occasionally run public programs where people can sign up for it, I think it's about 30 slots, and every single time, three months in advance, they're all filled up, and there's enough interest and popularity. And the people I've seen down there are, gee, I didn't know you climbed, I mean, people from around here and stuff, too, they're saying what a difficult challenge it is to get down there.
What's the approximate, do you have any idea what a piece like that would cost?
This is second-hand knowledge. I've talked to some people, including a person who shares, well, he's part of major. My understanding of this one, where they actually went up to Boston, Massachusetts, Rockworth, who built this and custom-designed this, is that the structure itself was approximately $800,000, and then the surrounding area, rubber mats, other pictures, playground things you see are $200,000, so approximately $1 million. Those are approximately, those are second-hand, we're hearsay numbers.
And Fred and I, and I think maybe Michelle, too, we have a meeting later this week with John O'Meara. We had talked about that we would follow up. It was a good, a good opportunity to just reconnect with him, to find out what's going on in the park, and look at what options we may have or they may have. And also, Fred and I have had some conversations about looking at what are some of the other things potentially. They have new, I guess, workout stations that are outdoor facilities now, that are much different than what they used to be, that at some point might be something that we would consider and look at. And the reference to the skate park and the relocation of that, we do currently have that programmed in the CIP for 2014 to look at making some changes there. So we can look at some potential alternatives or options and get information back to council.
Marcia, Mayor Lee brought an interesting point about Kaufman Park, but we had a master plan for Kaufman Park, and focus has changed since we did that into more healthy, fit Dublin, and we're expanding it more and more. I'm wondering if we do recommend for PrAC to look at some of these things that we need to, since it's in the Bridge Street Corridor, based on our focus there, if we should start a plan of updating the master plan for Kaufman Park, so that, you know, we don't come into this thing where it goes, "Oh, that wasn't planned." I'm wondering if we should consider that.
Well, we can take a look. I know there's been a lot of programming that, that we currently are doing for work to be completed next year, and then the following years, based upon the existing Kaufman Park plan. I do know that the boards and commissions are looking at their items of interest, so that may be something that we look at, that PrAC would pursue for next year as well.
Okay.
By the way, Mr. Krausy, back in the 1970s, a long time ago now, I attended an outward-bound school in western North Carolina where I engaged in some pretty intense mountain climbing and, and rappelling. And actually, a little closer to home, there's some very good climbing in the Seneca Rocks region in West Virginia. It's about a five-hour drive from here. I've been there, and, yeah, yeah, I was five years old when I attended that school.
For a second, this might happen, it turns out, but I've been talking to many people, some of them just use that as like a warm-up for when they're going on trips to some of their places, right? And just add one thing to the city manager's comments, and that-
Mr. Krausy, if you'd go to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. One thing I would like to add to the city manager's comments, I talked to the general manager of the Audubon Park today, and he's extremely excited, and you talk about some different concepts and ideas, he's extremely excited that apparently Rotary Club is their partner, and they were the impetus to get it going, but he was talking about all the different resources that they're pulling together to make what he says is going to be a fabulous obstacle course, well, gee, I'd like to do better and make one that everybody can use at the same time. It's interesting, he said he's an ex-military person, you know, military, and he's used to military-type obstacle courses, and he said, "You're going to be impressed with this. It'll be open in the spring." They can start working on that in about, probably four to six weeks from now.
You know, if staff's reviewing this, I'd like to, I'd like to have Ron Whittington weigh in on it, and also councillor, just from a liability perspective.
Yeah, you know, I just want to say, I want to thank you, Eric, for bringing this forward, because, you know, a climbing wall and a fantastic complex obstacle course would be that feather in our hat. And what, and I don't want this thing to backslide, I'd love to see us push this on the seesack and find out, and there might be a debate on the funding, and, and as I told you from the last discussion we had about it, John O'Meara admitted that his park, you know, could use something with a little punch-up here, it's missing, you know, a major feature. And we all voted for that levy to spend money, and he's spending lots of money, as you've noticed in the paper, on his other parks, but not a whole lot in our area, and our citizens helped pay for that levy. So, you know, I don't want to lose sight of that. I think the idea of moving it down by the river or somewhere there where, when we get the Bridge Street Corridor finished, and you have a lot of people, high-density population, it'd be a fantastic amenity to draw people into the area, but- But, failing that, and if the expense is too much, I'd like to see us look at, and, you know, it's up to council whether, you know, we're going to put that kind of money in this, you know, to, to partner this then, just to get it going back up at the Glacier Ridge site. So, I'd just hate to see this slide away, you know?
And something else is probably just good as a reminder for residents to remember that the city did contribute and is continuing to contribute to the land acquisition for the Metro Park. We are making annual payments through 2017 that total about 7.7 million dollars for the acquisition of that land. So, we do recognize the importance and greatly appreciate the Metro Park and have invested heavily in, in the acquisition of that land.
And the administrative side too, as far as the liability, having them run it, it would be a big plus, but personally, I agree with the other council members, it'd be fantastic if it was in a high-use area in the center of our city. Both of these ideas are fantastic.
One thing that we are really glad that you brought this up, and one of the, we have a history of citizens coming forward with wonderful, grand ideas, and they become project coordinators, you know, and they, we have the Miracle League as a great example of, of a gentleman like yourself coming forward with the idea and ultimately raising additional money that was needed from the private sector and individuals to partner with the city to do that. So, we certainly will keep you actively engaged in the concept and the development of it.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. I'm not a good public speaker. These are things I meant to say, would try to say, may I pass copies out?
If you give them to Clark, she'll distribute those.
I think that's one for each. I only have a Fortune One brochure from the stingy people of Park downtown, but that could be shared.
You've piqued everyone's interest. I'm sure, I'm sure if we haven't been there, we will be. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I think it's time to move on to the consent agenda. I'd ask council members if anyone wishes to remove any of the items from the consent agenda this evening.
I have a question, councillor. I've got an interest in item number two. I'm not sure if that requires me to pull that off and abstain from that and then vote on the rest of it.
It does not. This is just, if you see in item two, all the rusty buck, I do not believe it requires you to abstain.
That's fine then. I have none.
Okay. All right then, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the eight items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And if you call off the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes. Great, thank you. We have a piece of postponed legislation, that's Resolution 57-12.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Dublin Arts Council for the provision of cultural arts services, amending Exhibit B of the lease agreement previously executed by the parties.
Yes.
The only update that we have is the staff memo identifies an additional edit that the Dublin Arts Council requested that has been included in the revised agreement and also the correction, as the mayor has identified at the last council meeting. And then, earlier this afternoon, I received an email from David Gillon stating that the Arts Council, the Board of Directors, had passed the, the agreement, and so we should be ready to, to vote as presented this evening. We recommend that action.
Great. John, do you have anything to add?
No, Mayor. I'm just happy that after seven years, this is over. Four different council people sitting there, so I'm just glad to see it's finished and put to bed.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other comment, Ian, if you call off the vote, please.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Excuse me, hold on, I'm sorry. Mr. Mauer. Mr. Mauer wishes to comment. I apologize, Mr. Mauer.
I have two minuscule items. If I was sure that this was a clerical issue, I would simply turn them over to the clerk, but I'm not sure. I must say that I was moved to say that this agreement is a very tight, mature, and mutually user-friendly agreement. Now, quickly, could you move to, I'm looking at the text which appears as Exhibit A. Turn to page three. Item seven. Paragraph two. You have that? Okay. The Dublin Arts Council will also provide grant opportunities. Now, should there, should that be two or four there following grant opportunities?
Yes.
It should be?
It should be.
Okay. All right, quickly, then the second one. Page five, number nineteen. This agreement may be amended only, now should the word "by" be on there? By legislative authority? This is page five, item nineteen. This agreement may be amended only by legislative authority?
By the legislature.
Okay, that's it. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mauer, I am so impressed by how well you read this. It's nice to know that there's citizens watching out for us. When it comes to those kind of errors, and I appreciate you checking those out, it might help if you called Anne during the day and brought it up to her, and then we could have it at, at our desk.
Yeah, I said I wasn't sure whether this was clerical or whether it was something I wasn't able to make out.
Okay, she certainly would know. She's very capable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But, it's good to see that you're English, you are an English professor, right?
Well, I've been called a lot of things, that's one of them.
It's good to see you're still putting it to use.
Oh, thank you. You'll get my fee in the morning.
All right. So, those corrections will be made. So, we're voting on this agreement with the two corrections, as pointed out by Mr. Mauer. Ian, if you call off the vote, please.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes. Great, thank you. Moving on to our second readings. Ordinance 60-12.
Authorizing vacation of a portion of an existing bike path easement granted to the city by 45 Z L C.
Thank you, Mr. Hammersmith. Whenever you're ready.
Mayor Lecliter, members of council, you may recall back in September, we were provided a shared-use path easement by the Stanley Law Offices for the path to be constructed over on Martin Road. That easement looked like this and included both a temporary easement and a proposed permanent easement. They originally donated a permanent easement back in 2007 when they constructed their facility. Again, they donated what we requested for construction of the path, and part of the request in our conversation with them was if we would be willing to vacate a portion of the existing easement and trade off of what additional area they gave to the city, and that's the red triangle shown on the exhibit on the screen. We are more than willing to do so. It's not an area that we will need for the proposed path, so with that, staff does recommend that you adopt this ordinance this evening, vacating this portion of the easement.
Any question, comment? If you call off the vote, please.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Great, thank you. Ordinance 61-12.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 0.135 acre more or less fee simple interest, with 0.082 acres as present road occupied, 0.086 acre more or less fee simple interest, and a 0.046 acre more or less temporary construction easement from Jubilee LP.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hammersmith?
Mayor, members of council, once again, we have an additional acquisition associated with the Emerald Parkway Phase Eight construction, this being from Jubilee, and they own two properties over along the north side of Bright Road, east of where Emerald Parkway will intersect Bright Road, and that would be this area. You may recall, we own a strip of property already for, right away for Emerald Parkway as it goes north of Bright Road. From Jubilee, they own two properties along the north side of Bright Road and also an additional property that'll be along the east side of the extended Emerald Parkway. In fact, just off this drawing, you can see Emerald Parkway 5B, which is, just locates just south of Hard Road. In accordance with the staff report, we did provide compensation in the amount of 10% over the appraised value, total value, to be provided to the owners, $12,870. Staff recommends that we proceed with this acquisition. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, comments? If you call off the vote.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Mr. Gerber? Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Moving on to our first readings. Ordinance 63-12.
Rezoning approximately 1.35 acres located in the southwest corner of Dale Drive and West Dublin-Grenville Road, from BSC Bridge Street Corridor Commercial District to CC Community Commercial District to facilitate development of an approximately 3,800 square foot restaurant.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Langworthy, whenever you're ready.
I'm usually ready right away. It's the technology that fails me. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a first reading for an ordinance for a rezoning at 4555 West Dublin-Grenville Road for rezoning from BSC Commercial to CC Community Commercial, case number 12053. So, the location of the site at the corner of Dale and West Dublin-Grenville Road, it's the outlot that is remaining from the development of the shops at River Ridge, and it's just over 1.3 acres in size. You see also, it's adjacent to Wendy's Restaurant on, existing Wendy's Restaurant on Riverside Drive, just downhill. This shows a little bit of the context of the development, again, showing the existing Wendy's Restaurant up in the upper left-hand corner and the site and the relationship to the Montgomery and the rest of the shopping center. One of the reasons this is important, later we'll talk about the BZA's action on parking, and they have, Wendy's has acquired a parking easement and cross-access agreement with Montgomery Restaurant and the rest of the shopping center to use a portion of their parking area. As we always do for rezonings, this is for the, the community plan shows this as general commercial, surrounded by general commercial with the rest of the shops at River Ridge. This is a blow-up of the area plan, showing development of the outlot for the shops at River Ridge in the Sullivan Road, State Route 161 area plan. Also, the Bridge Street Vision Plan shows this as well. However, in the Bridge Street Vision Plan, this was shown as office and loft apartment, but as you know, during the area rezoning, City Council rezoned the area back to and into the commercial district to allow commercial uses to continue along 161. Current zoning of the property is BSC Commercial. Again, the entire shopping center is shown that way, also down to Shamrock Boulevard and across the street at Bridge Point, all in the BSC Commercial District. This also was heard by the BZA a few weeks ago. BZA heard of both sign and parking variances for the signs. Wendy's was approved a sign combination, wall sign and ground sign, which they would have been actually allowed or permitted under the BSC Commercial, but this was processed as being under the Community Commercial District in anticipation of the rezoning. They were also permitted two wall signs, which also would be permitted, and they had variances on both the wall sign height, you can see it there on the screen, as well as the logo size. They were also approved a ground sign. However, three additional wall signs were disapproved by the Board of Appeals, as well as a directional sign that included advertising and exceeded the height allowance by the code. Parking variances that were submitted and approved were for the required number of spaces, again, with that agreement with the rest of the shopping center to use a portion of their area for parking as well. And also, the parking space size was slightly reduced for the angled-sized spaces. Those are both approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Some of the development requirements for the Community Commercial District and the zoning background, previous zoning prior to the Bridge Street was also Community Commercial with a corridor development district review process. Current zoning, as I mentioned, is BSC Commercial, proposed as Community Commercial. Development requirements for Community Commercial, lot and yard requirements are fairly minimal, is consistent with mostly Community Commercial District or all the Community Commercial District. Landscaping would have to meet the zoning code requirements, that's true with the other criteria as well, lighting and so on. Signs, as I mentioned, approved by the BZA, parking approved by the BZA, as well as zoning code requirements would be, parking lot landscaping, screening and so on would also be required through the zoning code requirements. Even after the rezoning is done, there are still additional planning and zoning commission approvals that are required, conditional use for the patio and a conditional use for the drive-through window, and those are currently scheduled pending the outcome of the rezoning This is a comparison between the pending Community Commercial District and the BSC Commercial District in terms of the uses that are permitted. It's a little bit difficult to, to do an apples-and-oranges comparison to this in that the BSC Commercial District tended to collapse a number of the uses that the current zoning code splits out into a number of different categories and specifics. But, these are the general categories that apply to both the Community Commercial and the BSC Commercial District. And you can see that the code at the bottom tells you, like, part of it, for example, under the consumer theaters, or consumer services for theaters, permitted but size limited and so on, there's some other that are there. At the planning commission, and I, we should mention, the planning commission recommended disapproval of this and discussion, as you probably read in the, in the planning commission minutes, had much to do with this particular aspect of it, as to what uses could be permitted. And it was felt by the planning commission that some of the uses would not be particularly appropriate in this location for the community, if it was rezoned into the Community Commercial And as part of that, we, after that vote, had an opportunity to sit down with Wendy's and worked out with them an agreement that we're going to introduce you tonight. Now, unfortunately, we finished this late last week, so, and Dennis Hill is here from Wendy's Companies, he can help explain a little bit of that to you too and talk to you about their perspective on it. But, we, what we tried to do was look at the planning commission's objections and see if we could address those objections in the best way possible. So, what we've come up with is a development agreement that limits the, the permitted uses to retail stores, administrative business and professional offices, and personal computer, personal and consumer services. And then, we put a list of not permitted uses as being automobile sales, building material sales, sexually-oriented business establishments, and all conditional uses with the exception of patios and drive-through windows. And Wendy's has agreed to put the limitation of this on their property in the form of the development agreement. In addition, Wendy's has agreed that a development process for future structures that were not undertaken by Wendy's will require review as equivalent of the final development plan using plan development process, which would mean a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission of a subsequent use that might go in, which was another one of the issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission had. We apologize for not being able to get you this agreement and with your packet, but as I say, we finished it late last week, and we'll get your copies between the readings here, so that you can have a chance to peruse that. The develop, the agreement was written by our law director and submitted to Wendy's for their review. So, with that, as I mentioned, we, the planning's analysis was a planning commission for approval, the planning recommendation for approval, and as I mentioned, planning zoning commission recommendation was for that disapproval, but we hope and believe we've taken care of the major objections that the planning commission had through that process. So, I'd be here to happy, or happy answering your questions, and Mr. Dennis Hill is here as well, from Wendy's Companies.
Steve, I noticed the one other thing, I think, and it may be addressed in that, I'm just not sure, because Wendy's does not redevelop it. You said it had to go through P and Z again.
Yes.
So, at that point, when it does that, are the waivers then dismissed? Because I think that was one of their issues, that the waivers... think that was one of their issues, that the waivers, not waivers, sorry, BZA, those, when they got the BZA approval for those conditions with the signs and all the heights and all, that runs with the property?
Yes, I think the only one to be fairly applicable would be the parking ones, because the, the signed ones are fairly specific to the architecture and the building itself, and the numbers were fairly specific as to what was approved. So, my suspicion would be that if something came in behind that, they probably would not be able to take advantage of those variances at any rate. Parking, however, probably would, but I'm assuming that the parking agreement would stay with the property as well.
The only thing that bothers me about the parking is I know I have to park at Montgomery M. because there's smaller spaces, but that's okay. But I'm not following yet about the variances that were granted by BZA for that property and how that is negated if it should change hands.
They're not, I can't say they're automatically negated, because variances, as you mentioned, run with the land. What I was trying to get at is the specificity of those variances in terms of the numbers, and they were like tenths of feet in numbers. I mean, it was very specific in terms of variances. I suppose someone could come in with the same building and reattach signs in those locations, then it would apply. But if a building was redeveloped and the system was scraped and a new building went up, then those variances would no longer be applicable.
Okay, so if there's, if the proposed building is somehow, I hate to say scrapped, but if it's changed in, by another property owner, if its property is sold, then those variances won't apply because of it being specific to this use? Is that correct?
The specificity of the, of those variances and, and the height and the numbers and the logo and such that were specific to that user, I think would be difficult to, I can't say it'd be impossible, but it'd be probably difficult to duplicate.
Okay, you concur. Our law director concurs.
I totally agree with what Mr. Langworthy said. The rest of the agreement, which you'll have in front of you next time, basically says that as long as they run a Wendy's store, and even if they come in and remodel Wendy's store, everything applies. If for some reason that store was no longer there and it was scraped and something else was, or basically taken down, or, they have to go through a development process. And the variances that were given for the signs are all tied to the Wendy's store, so they just wouldn't work.
Okay, so they don't run with the property, they run with the Wendy's?
They run with the property, Kathy, but they wouldn't work unless they built an identical restaurant with identical logos for size, because that's how they were granted. We believe that the development agreement, which, how this will work, by the way, is this will come back for a second reading, Kathy, for a vote on two weeks from now. And then we will have a resolution authorizing Marsha to enter into a development agreement, which you will have, which we wrote, which we think covers all these contingencies and which Wendy's is in agreement with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I read through the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and all I can, and it's not real clear to me. I assume the applicant opted out of the Bridge Street Corridor, opted out of the PUD and wanted to go this route. Is that, is that your understanding? Or, or somewhere along the way was, was the applicant persuaded to take this route? I'm trying to understand the history.
Well, as we always do, we give all the options that are available and indicate what time schedules are and the processes that, that would go through. And Wendy's elected to try the standard district rezoning and to then go for the necessary variances that would be required by that.
You know, I was reading from the chair. She indicated that it was unfortunate the commission was where they were on this, because they've been having, or trying, attempting to have a conversation regarding some waivers. And
Yes, but
Could you explain what they're referring to?
Part of the, going through the process of letting them know, because it wasn't just a PUD option and standard district, we also said if you stayed within the Bridge Street zoning, here's what you'd have to do. So, what we did was we analyzed the plan as we had it at the time and determined that, that there were a significant number of waivers. And let me explain waivers, because you all haven't seen it very much. But what happens is if you can't meet the, the requirements of the Bridge Street District regulations, you have a process you can go through to request waivers from those individual requirements. That process requires that you be reviewed by the planning commission according to some standards that are listed in the code. And then those standards are reviewed against those individual waivers. And then the planning commission decides individually as to which of those waivers should be or should not be approved. So, that, that's a process.
Okay.
And we ended up with, I don't exactly remember how many, but it was like a page and a half of different waivers they would have to go through. So, it was, it was very extensive. And it seemed impractical for us to try to take them through that kind of process and have the planning commission vote on each and every one of those waivers. And we didn't even feel that many of those waivers, if you stuck with the Bridge Street District regulations, would, would have even been justified.
Steve, for example, what would be the type of waiver that we may have faced, or P and Z may have faced?
Probably the most major ones had to do with the location of the building.
Okay.
The building in this case would have had to occupy a portion of the front property line and would had to be, be in what we call the required building zone. So, it would have been essentially up in the corner of the site, which in Wendy's view complicated their drive-through arrangement.
Sure.
And the other part of that, I should say, and I'm sure Mr. Hill will mention this too, is that this store was intended to be, I'll call it a flagship store, but it's also intended to be an example store, if you will, where they could bring in franchisees and people from around the country to see how the store should operate. And it was supposed to be an example of that. And I think they felt as if if they built it in accordance with Bridge Street District regulations, it, it wouldn't have been able to function in that way.
Okay, I kind of follow all that. I was just kind of curious why, it seemed like P and Z was really hanging their hat on these waivers and, and I don't know if it's appropriate or fair to read in between the lines, but it was almost like they were saying, well, well, we've told everybody about waivers and we don't, and we don't know how to handle them. And I don't know, I'm kind of confused by that. And you may not be able to speak for them, but I thought we put together a, a code. I'm aware that there are waivers in there and those would be heard by P and Z. Were they looking for some direction from staff? Were they looking for some criteria in the code with respect to what would constitute a waiver? I'm trying to understand, if you will, what they are trying to, what their great objection was.
Well, I, I think part of it's general. I don't know that it's necessarily specific to this particular development. We just indicated to them the number of waivers that would have been required from the general idea of them. But I don't know it's as specific as the idea of, and as you know, the, the code, when it left the Planning and Zoning Commission, didn't have the option of a rezoning. So, they never really got a chance to discuss that option of when would we allow somebody to rezone out of the Bridge Street District. So, I think part of that's a little bit of their, their lack of understanding about when things should be zoned out of the Bridge Street District and when things should be left into the Bridge Street District. So, I think there's a little bit of clarity that has to come forward on that as we get some of these under our belt. I think that's, that's part of it. I don't know it was as specific to this particular use as it was to that process.
Yeah, because I was under the impression when we adopted this some months ago, that the applicant had an option. They could file under the, what I call the Form Based Code, or they could opt to, to a PUD or to a CC.
Another zone district. That's correct. And that's the way the code ended up.
Yeah. So, so that would not be something under the purview thereby asking P and Z for, for permission on which way an applicant wanted to go. So, but that would be up to the applicant.
It's the applicant's choice.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I think, you know, you bring up some questions that maybe we should put on an agenda and see what, where they are on that. I would be interested.
Well, it would strike me, I mean, I don't mind having dinners and the like with P and Z, but, you know, if P and Z wants to take on projects and work with staff and come up with some recommendations for us to look at, I'm all in favor of that, but I'm not necessarily interested all the time of having roundtable discussions with one of our boards.
But in this particular instance, there were, there were multiple options available to the applicant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
And, and if I was following the conversation that you were having with Mr. Langworthy, you know, the applicant opted, you know, a particular option that was available to them.
Yeah.
May not have been the option that some Planning and Zoning Commission members would have favored, but the process still allowed them to pursue that option. Is that fairly accurate?
Well, and, and it's, I think it's, I think, I'm sure you read in the minutes too, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have particular objections to Wendy's plan per se. I mean, they were, I think, generally in favor of, maybe enthusiastically in favor of what was being proposed. It was just a matter of how we got there. And that's why we came up with the idea of development agreement, to try to, to try at least address some of their concerns that were stated at the meeting in terms of the, the uses that might be permitted in the process should Wendy's happen for whatever reason to vacate.
One of the things, I think, is that if somebody wants to come in under the Bridge Street Corridor and they have forty, I'm not going to exaggerate, they have forty waivers, would it not?
That might be realistic here.
But at that point, would it not be prudent to say, we're going to encourage you to go the other route? And I think that's what they're trying to get with, is like, well, you know, is there a maximum amount of waivers we should consider? Or, and then again, it depends on the degree of that. So, I think that's some of the process they're, they're working on or thinking about.
Yeah, and I, I think that's going to be difficult to come up with a policy in that, because it's really going to be case by case as you go through it.
That's what it sounds like.
The individual circumstance, as you say, the number of waivers, the, the nature of the waivers, what they might be. Because there's some waivers that can be fairly minor and some that can be fairly major or combinations of those. I, I think it'd be very difficult to come up with a static policy that would cover all of those circumstances.
Steve, I imagine for the, for the applicant, I mean, the option that they chose probably in their opinion would offer them the most, I guess, certainty, if you will, or as to what may happen with their application.
Yes, and we were trying to, to help them meet a schedule as well. So, we took all these things into account with, with what the applicant wanted to do and tried to
Which gets into one of our policies, that we want applicants to move along a little quicker through the process, albeit it's still a, certainly a, a strong critique and review of, of the application.
And honestly, we didn't feel as badly about this one coming out of the Bridge Street District, mostly because of this particular site and the fact that it, it kind of continues the development pattern. It's already been started by the, by shops at River Ridge. I think had it been kind of an isolated site somewhere that, you know, didn't have that kind of development pattern around it, we might have had a different view of it. But this one, I think, is consistent with what's already being developed or has been developed there.
Steve, you mentioned in your presentation that there, that P and Z would still review this, but it would be in the area of conditional uses as it relates to the drive-through and a few other items.
The patio.
The patio, yes. Outside of that, let's say this goes forward and stays in this classification, then the review will be conducted by staff? And what is the criteria that staff will apply?
For the patio and drive-through?
No, no, not for the, not for the drive, not for the drive-through or the patio, but for the, the building itself and, and the other.
Well, it's the Community Commercial and the rest of, that's why I put the development requirements up there. It's the, our typical landscape requirements, our lighting requirements are the same. The, the other parking requirements in terms of vehicles, screening and so on and so forth, so.
But still, under that, when I was on P and Z, the famous line was that it's compatible with surrounding uses and, and
Harmonious.
Harmoniously situated with the other buildings in the area.
Yeah, we're still waiting for definition of that from Mr. Smith.
Yeah, well, when you, when you find one, let me know.
Yeah.
I know when I see it, though.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I had just a quick question. I saw in the minutes that at least one of our commissioners had asked about the drive-through facilities. Did we learn any lessons from the Kroger Center at all with respect to how this was put together?
Oh, I think we learned some lessons from that, yes.
And that's been addressed, then?
Yeah, we, we've already looked at the stacking capacity and they're well beyond what our code requires.
What did our code require over at Kroger?
I wasn't here at the time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bail on that one.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I, I think also, we, we don't have the conflict there. Am I right?
You don't have two restaurants.
There were some conflicts.
Hopefully, that'll get fixed at Kroger after we go through some of the other improvements that they promised with the Roundabout?
It's on our list.
Okay.
Great. If there are no
I'm not sure it's on their list, but it's on my list, I think.
Are there questions at this point of Mr. Langworthy? I'd ask Mr. Hill if he'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council. Just very briefly, we're very pleased to be here. We appreciate your consideration of our proposal for the rezoning. We've worked with the city staff over the past several months to try to accomplish this. We have moved down the path of rezoning to Community Commercial. If, we were a little surprised at the planning commission meeting when there were objections, and I think Mr. Langworthy stated it correctly. It was really regarding the path to get there as opposed to the actual proposal. We're very happy to offer the development agreement as a way to try to satisfy any concerns that were mentioned. I, I think what we're offering will accomplish that. And I just simply say that we agree with the recommendation of the planning staff. And that particular restaurant has actually been there since nineteen seventy-seven, so it's been there for thirty-five years. It's really a continuation of the use at the corner to the adjoining property. Actually, freeing up our existing property will help with the city's building of a Roundabout in the future. And we're very happy to cooperate in that regards, but we do need a place to go. And we're proposing to transfer the use from one location to the next location. We look forward to being here for many, many more years. The particular facility, Mr. Langworthy mentioned a flagship for Wendy's, it will be. We have many franchisees, we have investors, bankers, folks from all over the world that come to our headquarters to view our locations in the surrounding area. And what we'd like to do is keep them in Dublin, right across the street, and take them to the very best location in, in our system. So, that's what we're trying to do across the street. It's going to be excellent architecture. I'm not sure that we're absolutely required to submit all the plans, but we've already submitted all the building elevations, so you can see exactly what it's going to look like. We submitted a complete landscape plan, so you can see what we're proposing to do. So, there's complete disclosure as to what we're proposing to build. I ought to mention that as part of this facility, there will be a community room. We're going to have some artifacts from the museum that used to be in our headquarters, including the Olympic torch that Dave Thomas carried through the city of Dublin. So, we're going to do some very special things with this facility. And we just look forward to your cooperation in helping us get it built.
I know, I'm looking forward to the more public display of the artifacts that you used to be able to see at the Broad Street Store.
Yes.
You know, before that closed down and which have been maintained, I think, at the headquarters. But, you know, certainly there isn't the opportunity for the general public to see it there, you know, as was the case in the, in the former store on Broad Street. So, I think that'll be neat, you know, certainly for you, but for the general public and for the city of Dublin, you know, to have that on display in the community room and so forth. So, I think we're, we're all looking forward to it. So,
Right.
And appreciate your patience with our, our growing pains, you know, insofar as the Bridge Street District Code is concerned and so forth. And, you know, we're still in the, in the early stages of that. And so, I, I think I wasn't at the meeting, of course you were, but, you know, from the minutes, I think as everyone has summarized, you know, it was not so much the outcome, but the methodology. So,
I understand.
I, I think we're getting to where everybody wants to be, so. Anything else? Okay, very good. Well, we have, we'll have the second reading on October twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Maurer, you wanted to comment?
Well, I don't know whether this is the place for him to comment, since there's going to be a second reading. I, this is what I'd like to do. I found the, the crux for me was with the, the one rezoning, what the one zoning and what the other zoning, how they differed and what the implications of that were. Now, I think I'll sign up and talk to somebody here. Would Sarah Ott be a good person to talk to about this?
You probably want to come see us.
What?
You probably want to come see us.
Okay. I guess one thing that struck me, a comment in the planning and zoning debater conversation, they pointed out, or somebody said, if this rezoning occurs, it will create a precedent that'll open the floodgates to, and then they said innumerable enterprises who would come up. And I couldn't understand what their objection would be, but why there'd be this floodgate. And so, I want to get at something And so I wanna get at something like that. I, I, now, say the crux is I don't know what's involved, what the implications are, the two zonings, so I'll see you sometime, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Thank you all. Moving on then to the portion designated as other, there's a request for a fee waiver, excuse me, for an administrative appeal, and Mr. Langworthy or, no, not Mr. Langworthy.
No.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
We're gonna have a little presentation, I guess?
Actually, I was just gonna give a brief description of the request and answer any questions. I'm Tammy Flating, I'm representing land use and long-range planning for this particular fee waiver request. The site that we're discussing is forty fifty-sixth West Dublin Grandview Road. The applicant for this particular site is pursuing an appeal, an administrative appeal through the Board of Zoning Appeals, and is asking for a fee waiver to City Council for an application fee that's required as part of that process. Just a little bit of information about the site. The site's zoned BSC Office, which is Bridge Street Office District, which of course allows for a mixture of uses predominantly in the office categories. The applicant currently has a residential use and is appealing a decision from land use and long-range planning, whether that use is appropriate on this site or, quite frankly, permitted. The applicant's request is based on two issues, one of which is which process the application will be reviewed under. Under our current zoning class, or, or, our current zoning code, we have two provisions that review land use decisions. One is under non-conforming uses and one is under the Bridge Street Code. The reason why that's important to the applicant is currently we don't have an application fee for the first. We've reviewed the application, determined because of its location in the Bridge Street corridor, that the first issue is not relevant to the particular application, and in fact, the application fee for Bridge Street is the appropriate fee. I should say, as a clerical matter, we're looking to rectify the issue of non-conforming uses and the fact that there, there's not an appropriate fee at this time when we review our fee structure. In the early part of two thousand and thirteen, we'll, we'll correct that issue, but we currently have fees in place for all of our application processes, including Bridge Street. The second part of the applicant's request, and I believe is in the letter that he submitted to City Council, is, I guess, the assessment that use determination is not as extensive of a review process as other applications before the Board of Zoning Appeals. We'd simply say that our analysis is very complete, and quite frankly, it's, it's, I would say more encumbersome for a use determination, so we would say that if not the same amount of time, a higher amount of time would be used to review those applications. So, based on those two factors, we're requesting that the applicant, that of course will answer any questions that you have of staff, we respectfully request that the fee be implemented for this application process in order for it to proceed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I believe the applicant's here as well.
Any, any questions, Tammy, before we ask Dr. Jindal to come forward?
If I might just make sure I'm understanding. I know we went through a rezoning of the area, and so we were looking forward to it being a commercial use.
Correct.
And that was several years ago, if I recall correctly, probably longer than I remember. Two or three years, maybe even?
The process started a couple of years ago, it actually completed at the beginning of the year.
Okay. And so what, what then transpired, if I'm understanding correctly, was once you receive the rezoning, and so now you're in new zoning, you cannot use the property in the future at the old zoning if you haven't been in there in that. So while it was a residential home, it had not been, no one was living in it for a significant time. I can't even recall when somebody was living in it, frankly.
Yes, the, the basis of what you're saying is correct. There's a, there's a period of time in which they have to prove the, the house or the property was used for residence. Under Bridge Street, that's twelve months, so that would be the applicant's, I guess, burden of responsibility.
Okay. And, and so that is, and so then it, the applicant moves someone into the home as a residential home.
Yes.
And, and so was, received a code violation as a result of that?
Correct.
And then is a, sending, and so now he's seeking approval to use as a residential home?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, too. This applicant came forward to ask for a rezoning a few years ago.
Yeah, that was the same rezoning. There's a couple of different things that have happened recently with this property. A couple of years ago, the applicant pursued, pursued PUD, Planned Unit Development, for an office use for the site. That actually got approved in December, yeah, December of last year, January of this year, very recently. The applicant never pursued a final, well, I should say, pursued a final development plan for, for using the property in that way, but we never actually completed that application, so we haven't had any action on that request in months, well, in half a year. In the meantime, the site was zoned to, is part of the area rezoning for Bridge Street. So then it transitioned to a Bridge Street district.
And to follow up to make sure I understand Mayor Lee's question, all that time, no one lived in the house? Is that correct?
The applicant, and I probably should allow them to address this, but according to the information that we've been provided, is the house has been in disrepair up until the early portion of this year, and they've been working on it to get a tenant in the building. And so as of, I think, a couple of months ago, they've actually moved a family into the house and started using it as a residential structure.
And did we not notify everyone that was involved about this Bridge Street corridor and his property? He would've been notified on that?
Yes.
As of, you know, when we started the process?
Yes, in fact, we, I think we've had some discussions with the applicant as this proceeded.
Okay. I noticed you mentioned the phone calls. Thank you.
So, it's, I'm sorry, Rick, did you have a question?
Go ahead, please.
Long, long term, I mean, you know, obviously based on the rezoning and so forth, we, we don't want residential here, do we?
No, I mean, no. This area's clearly transitioning for office, commercial uses along this corridor, so we're, we're hoping that that transitions to the Bridge Street corridor, basically.
But in the meantime, a residential is, is a potential use?
We've, we've made the determination that under the Bridge Street Code, residential use is not a permitted use. The applicant's taking, taking an application forward to the Board of Zoning Appeals to appeal that decision and say that in fact, they do believe they are entitled to residential use on that site.
But what now the corridor is the Bridge Street corridor? Because he had received a change in zoning prior to us doing the Bridge Street corridor zoning. Am I, not correct?
No, you're absolutely correct.
All right, so in that rezoning that he requested and received, was residential permitted?
No.
No, so either way, it hasn't been permitted.
Did you have a question, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, is it, is it then therefore deemed a non-conforming use?
Well, that was the question that we had as a staff. There, again, there's two different sections in, in our zoning code that deals with, with use determinations. One's non-conforming uses, which you probably are mostly familiar with, and then there's a specific section in the Bridge Street Code, that the actual terminology is called an existing use. And what that requires is an applicant, if they don't conform to the current Bridge Street Code, they bear the responsibility of proving that a use that would have been a permitted use under the previous zoning district was in place for twelve months. So just to clarify what that means to the applicant is, if the previous zoning district allowed for residential use, that's the first requirement, has it been in place twelve months prior to the Bridge Street rezoning? Those are the two issues that the applicant will have to address.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna ask if he, let's say the applicant here abandoned that rezoning that was approved back in December. Well, as long as it was maintained as a residential use somewhere in that twelve-month period, then that applicant would still be permitted to utilize that property as a residential property, correct?
And that's, that's another part of the application process that the Board of Zoning Appeals will have to review. There's several instances where you have rights to, in this instance, a residential use, to proceed. Abandonment is another.
Yeah.
There's actually four criteria total.
And then you mentioned that staff is looking at a new fee structure or an additional fee structure as it relates to non-conforming uses? I didn't follow what you were saying.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, no, it's probably me.
It's more or less a clerical issue. We have fees in place for all of our application processes. The applicant, the last applicant that we had for use determination has been a year or so ago, and because our fee structure doesn't specifically list non-conforming use determinations, the Law Director's Office stated we can't accept a fee for something that doesn't exist. So what our intent is, we review our fees every year to update them, so it's our intention that, that this upcoming review process will include a fee specifically for non-use determinations.
So if, if, if we don't have anything on the book for that, and that's what he's asking for, then what does this fee represent?
The fee that they're asking-
Well, let's say, under what classification is this fee? That's probably a more accurate way of asking.
Specifically, it's the existing use section under the Bridge Street Code, which we think applies because he's located in the Bridge Street Code.
But that's not what he's asking.
No, I know.
Yeah, so it's, it's, okay.
I'm, I'm just trying to clarify that there, there has been some discussions with staff of which apply in, in our logic behind why we've applied the Bridge Street Code.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Let me just clarify a small note here, because this gets very confusing.
That's never good when Steve says that.
The, the non-conforming use part does not apply in the Bridge Street District anymore. The only thing that applies, that applies outside the Bridge Street District.
I understand.
Inside the Bridge Street District, it's existing use provisions.
Right.
The existing use provisions are very clear about how to declare non, an existing use. That's done at administrative level. It does not have to be done by the Board of Zoning Appeals, therefore it does not need a fee. The administrative appeal then is to appeal our decision that it was abandoned, existing use.
Okay, so I imagine his argument to, on appeal would be, well, I abandoned the rezoning, one, number two, I clearly intended for this to be residential, right?
I'll let him have his argument.
We'll, we'll, I'm just trying, I'm trying to-
But how can he say he clearly meant for it to be residential?
I don't, I don't know, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, but I think for me, it's like, it was, he had a rezoning all that time for a, what about a PUD?
Yeah.
So, and now he's saying, I clearly meant for it to be residential?
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not trying to put words in his mouth or anything like that, I'm just trying to understand how we, how we got here, you know?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kinda confused because it's like, when you go for PUD, obviously you're not expecting it to be residential.
That's right.
Now, all of a sudden, you're over here saying, oh, I always meant for it to be-
But I read this, and it sounds like he's trying to make it residential, and then I start understanding the fee structure, and I'm just trying to put all the dots together here.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, it's a little confusing.
Let's have Dr. Jindal come forward. Sir?
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us your time.
Dr. Jindal, if we could have your name and address?
My name is Sudhir Jindal, this is Abhijindal. We are the owner of forty fifty-six West Upper Grandville Road, and intention is not to keep it as a residential, only to keep it as long as, when we're ready to build it. As you all know, the economy went down, took me longer than, way longer than to get the zoning done, and in order, in the meantime, paying for attorneys and architect, and I acquired two architects because the, for whatever reason, the zoning didn't like the design from the first architect. So we ran out of money and we couldn't change anything. And then we had a break-in in the house in February. I was preparing, fixing the house because as I understood before that we could maintain it as a house as long as it's a house. And for example, there's a lady living li, next to that house, in the house, which is also PUD as well as Bridge Street corridor change. So I thought I could maintain it as long as I'm ready, when I'm ready to build the new building, I'll go ahead and demolish there and rebuild it. And in the process, I called for permitting, there was no need for permitting because we're doing cosmetic changes such as roofing and other things, changing kitchens, kitchen cabinets and all that. So we, we did invest a lot of money in there to fix it for, so somebody could live in it, because we're just sitting there, it didn't look as good as it does now. If, I don't know if you guys have passed by, I have never abandoned the building, it was always maintained, it was lawn mowed, I would go in there, check it out, everything, trying to fix it myself. As much time as I could get, doing it alone is not easy to do it, and with my military job, in the, being in the guard and all that, I would not get all the weekends to work either. At the same time, I was, my daughters was getting married and, you know, so it took a longer time than I expected. So finally, when house was broken into in February, I hired some help to assist me in fixing it. And as soon as we fixed it, we rented under the impression of that it can remain existing use as long as I do not build to the new building. And I was told that as long as I do not add more than fifty percent or demolish more than fifty percent of the building, it can remain the existing structure and building, use.
Not to complicate this much more, the fifty percent regulation would be for the structure if it were an exist, if the, non-conformities can be a number of things. They can be a structure, they can be a lot, they can be use. What, what I think Mr. Jindal might be referring to is a non-conforming structure. That's, that's not the requirement for an existing use, so, I mean, clearly, we've been in conversations through the Bridge Street corridor process. It is rather complicated, but we thought we were very clear that the use itself would transition to an office use, so I think that might be where the confusion came in.
And in addition, I had talked to two very familiar and intelligent staff members who both guided me, telling me there's no fee for this application, and, and that's why I'm requesting for the fee waiver, because I was led into believing there was no fee charge for this, and both members told me, and they were senior members as well, I'm not talking about just some clerk sitting on the front, and if that was the case, then I should have been notified earlier as well. And they also told me that fee is not meant, meant to be for such a small piece of parcel, we're looking for a larger project and larger properties. So it doesn't even justify, and I don't have to submit any plans for review for appeal, so therefore it's not gonna take as much time for the staff members to review and do things for the appeal.
Well, I don't think our fee structure is, is determined by the size of the parcel in question, number one, if I'm not mistaken, and-
Well, that's what was mentioned to me from the staff member. The intent was not there for such a small parcel.
Okay. I, I, I think the other more fundamental problem here, Dr. Jindal, is that you, the property hasn't been utilized for a residential purpose for more than twelve months. I think that's the real problem here. You know, as compared, for example, to the property next year, if that's the case, I don't know whether it is or not, which I would expect has probably been continuously used as residential, and that, that's, that's why it is distinct from your property. You know, I, I think that, you know, through some unfortunate circumstances, whether they're, they were within your control or not, you know, you started to move down the path towards developing this in a different manner, different from residential, and, you know, you're now trying to go back in time, if you will. And, and I think the problem here is that twelve months have expired or, or passed such that you can't, you can't recapture that use, if you will, and I, I think that's a problem. Is that fairly accurate?
That's correct.
I'm not trying to go back into the time, sir. What I'm looking at is, until I'm ready to build it, when the economy picks up and everything, I'd be allowed to use it. I'm, right now, it's, if you look at within the last six months, this property has really looked a lot nicer by putting the brand-new roof, painting on it and everything, so if, I mean, if, and before I did the- it. I'm, right now, it's, if you look at within the last six months, this property has really looked a lot nicer by putting the brand-new roof, painting on it and everything. So if, I mean, if, and before I did the renovation, I even called and checked that was it okay to do it. And I was told, yeah, as long as it's not changed in any way or shape, cosmetic changes can be made, no problem. So over and over, I'm being, I feel like I'm being misled by the staff saying that, oh, yeah, you can do this. And then I'm told, no, you can't do this. Yeah, there is no fee. Now, there is a fee. So I'm puzzled at, where do I go? I mean, that's why I came here, to request the council to give me a relief from that. I mean, I feel like I'm in the wrong place there for asking any information. I get two different answers.
Well, to the extent that I understand it, sir, I, whether there's a fee charged or not, and our law director, I think, will stop me if I'm not supposed to be saying this. This is just my view, based on what I believe is transpired and so forth, as she leans forward. You know, I, I think what I'm hearing is, your request isn't likely to be approved. I, it's very unfortunate that you've, you know, gone to the expense and the trouble that you have.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure we all appreciate the extent to which, although I would think code would require you to maintain the property, you know, according to a certain standard, or otherwise, it would be condemned, you know, and then there would be other issues. But what I'm hearing is that you're not likely to get, your request isn't likely to be granted, not, not with respect to the waiver, but with respect to your ability to utilize this property for residential purposes. Is that-
Yes.
I'm not going to stop you, Mayor, because I don't think you've said anything wrong. This property, just to clarify, this property was rezoned by this council in 2010. There was a little confusion.
Sorry.
And, and then during, and then the Bridge Street Corridor process went through, and he was involved in the Bridge Street Corridor process and was aware of, he'd gotten his rezoning, and they never did finish the final development plan. So that, however, during that whole process, Bridge Street Corridor went through, and he was notified, and so that's the process he's under. So I think our determination was that, that the choice that they, that staff made to have the appeal run under, under that section of existing as defined by the Bridge Street Corridor was an accurate choice. Now, whether or not you grant a waiver or not, it's a different issue. Whether the Board of Zoning Appeals approves it's a totally different issue.
Right.
If, if you take me, the applicant here, his word, that he said, did I hear you properly, sir, that, that staff, you called staff and said, hey, I'm going to fix up my house, and they said, okay, go ahead and-
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, is there paperwork that you file with the city that-
I'm sorry, sir?
Is there paperwork that you file with the city to-
No, sir, I just, there was no need for it because there was nothing which required a permit to be fixed. Like, for example, for roofing, I don't need a permit. For changing the cabinets inside or changing the door and things, don't require any permits. So there was no permits. And I did check with the Building Department as well, and they told me there was no need for permits if you're changing these things.
Let me clarify that a bit. The answer you get is often dictated by the question you asked. The question he asked was about the building. He has rights to maintain the building so that it's safe, not, doesn't further deteriorate by the weather and so on and so forth. So he has the rights to fix the roof, fix the doors, whatever he needed to do. That had nothing at all to do with the use itself. There are rules that apply to the building, there are rules that apply to the use, and there are separate rules. He was never allowed or never told that he could continue the use. He was only told that he could do what he needed to do to the building to keep it maintained.
Okay.
Steve, this is kind of, one homeowners meeting I went to, they talked about when you had to get permits and all, like if you put in a new refrigerator or something like that. So if you're remodeling a kitchen or putting in new cabinets, you don't need a permit? At what point does a permit get triggered?
That's outside of my area, actually. So I don't know what point a building permit would be required.
Okay.
I think it has to do with a certain amount of dollars that are required by the improvement. And there's some, like, if he hooked up no electric, he'd have to have a new electrical permit and so on. So some of those things would trigger it.
That is, okay.
Water heaters, I think, do.
Out of curiosity, did you put in a new water heater?
No.
Okay, that's interesting.
I mean, I had all the-
No, it's in disrepair.
This was never abandoned. This house was, it was all electricity, water, everything connected to it. So the only difference is, like, maybe once in a while, I should have slept there. But the thing is-
And these are issues that would be determined by the Board of Zoning Appeals ultimately.
For BZA, and I don't think we're going to be able to resolve it here.
Right. I mean, to be clear, we're not BZA, you know, but, but it does occur to me that, you know, while you, certainly from your perspective, find yourself, you know, faced with some, you know, unfortunate circumstances, but not without some options. You know, it's not for me or us to say what those options are, but-
No, options were given to me by even a council member to sell it to the bigger builder. There were members in this, some have left. Also, from the staff, to sell it to the bigger builder. And maybe I was not smart enough to listen to them at that time. Maybe I would have smaller losses.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the options. But I respectfully request that I be given a fee waiver because I was told by the staff members in the City of Dublin, too, there'll be no fees at all, and not just one, two of them.
And that was-
I do want, I just want to say that I had conversations with Dr. Jindal and also with Dana about this, and Dana did say that he was told by the staff that there would be no fee.
Yeah.
So that part, you know, I think is a separate issue from all the other things we've talked about, which are going to be BZA, really. And I guess that I want to separate that issue, because I think that citizens, you know, do, you know, they ask a question, they get an answer. You know, then, if they're given the wrong answer, I don't know, where is the line between their responsibility and the staff giving the wrong answer? You know, I don't know.
It was my understanding that when, when the first call was made about a fee, and it was told no, but then there was a callback to-
Yes, we corrected that issue fairly quickly.
To let them know that there was a fee. So, you know, he was notified that there was a fee, and so you do still have the time to make your decision as to whether you want to pursue the appeal or not based upon a fee or the request for the waiver.
So you did get a second call back, then?
I would say that, let me go through my sheet here. We got this notice. I talked to the gentleman in the office, and he looked at it and said, okay, yeah, you can, we had a phone conversations before, and he told me, no, there'll be no fees for that. I went down, and he said, you know, go ahead and appeal for it. I went to the appeal and met Tammy, and she also told me that there's no fee for this, as well as, you need to submit every evidence you need to submit, because you cannot introduce any new evidence at the appeal. So even at the second time, I was told the same thing. And she gave me extension to submit all the evidence that I had been using this or working on the property to maintain as a house. And on 4th of September, I submitted the application. On 10th of September, I got an email back saying that your application is complete, your evidence are there, however, you need to submit fee for $1,280. So it was a week after, was in an email with no explanation that why and what happened, because two, three weeks before, I was told there was no fee, and three weeks later, I'm told there is a fee in an email without any explanation at all what happened. And then I talked to the other gentleman manager again, and he said, well, you can go and appeal, request a fee waiver from the council. And that's why we are here today, sir.
What was the timeframe that the staff corrected their original error?
If you allow me to at least represent that conversation, Mr. Jindal did come into the office, apply for the application, said that he'd previously talked to staff about a non-conforming use determination. What I said to him at that time is, if it is a non-use determination, there is no fee. Every application that we review, we review as a staff. My exact comments were, we'll review it as a staff. I'll give you comments as we would any applicant. I would say there was probably maybe a couple of days turnaround time for us to meet collectively as a staff. We reviewed it. I immediately contacted him and said, we're reviewing it under the Bridge Street Code, just for clarification, the same information that he had received months prior. But I was very timely in getting back to them. I thought that I did explain the process, and we did explain that there's a fee waiver process through council. So we tried to get all information in front of an applicant, but I want to be very clear on what that conversation was.
Okay. So just so that I understand, and please, anyone correct me, if I'm operating under a misunderstanding then. So the hardship, if you will, and I'm not suggesting that's our standard here, but the hardship, if you will, to Dr. Jindal existed for roughly a couple of days. Is that, is that, is that fair?
I mean-
I mean, insofar as Dr. Jindal is suggesting to us that, you know, he relied on the information that he received from staff, and as a result, you know, went to some trouble and expense. Is that, am I getting this right?
I'm not exactly sure when he started talking to the other staff member, but it was a short amount of time between when we started discussing the application, when he actually filed. So I would say a couple of weeks. In that time, the predominant conversation was what needed to be submitted for the application process.
That happened, if I'm understanding the timeframe. That happened, Tammy, long after he had already expended the money of putting on a new roof and cleaning the property up and these other things that he did. So he did all that in the summertime, because I happen to go down there a lot, and I saw it happening. And it was after he had done all of that, and somebody had moved into the home, that the staff then cited him for a code violation, for having, using it as a residential property.
Okay.
So your comment about he incurred cost and the timeframe, he actually had incurred the cost before the city ever knew he was going to use it as a residential property. So he, he got cited, then applied for the appeal, and, and then within, you know, a day or two or whatever, was told by the staff that there would be a fee for the application of the appeal.
And if I may add, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy, I'm understanding that the fee that's being asked for here may not be the fee that will be asked for once you go through, when staff goes through and understands what, or establishes, rather, a non-conforming fee, right?
Yeah, there's not necessarily correlation.
Okay.
But that fee will always be in place for Bridge Street.
Okay. So the fee will always be $1,270 regardless of what the issue is?
Well, this particular application's for an administrative appeal, which has nothing to do with the non-conforming use or existing use determination.
It's just the appeal, okay.
It's only for the administrative appeal. That fee stays the same.
Okay, so all appeals will be $1,270?
Correct. All the ones we've had have been that fee.
Okay, okay, okay.
And may I just add something that I always said administrative appeal, because that's what I was told from the first gentleman, and I never, it was, it, non-conforming came in the conversation, but appeal was always administrative appeal.
No fees for administrative appeal.
And I was given, first time I was given $1,280, then I was given $1,270. I had written two to three emails and asking, what is the right amount I should request for waiver? And finally, I was given an answer after, at least two requests to clarify the amount. And, I don't know.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve his request for a fee waiver.
Second. And if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Zerker?
Mayor Leclerc.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Staff comments?
No additional comments.
Great, thank you. Why don't we start off roundtable with Mayor Lee?
Yes, thank you. We had a finance committee meeting this evening before council, and we are in an excellent financial position at this time, having our tax, income tax in, amount is a little over 5% for the year. So we are certainly grateful to our businesses and residents. We would like to, we also reviewed our audit. We had a great audit, and we have a management letter with no findings. So we'd like, as a finance committee, we'd like to put in, ask the council to accept the 2011 audit report as submitted to the committee.
Is there a second? Thank you. And if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc?
Yes.
Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Lee, if you'd like to continue?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, what about the fee structure? Is that going to be on our agenda?
Yeah, there'll be legislation.
Yeah, that'll be legislation.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Just have one item. Clarification on the community grant program. Glynn Barre would like to extend their grant for another year. They had some other expenses. As you recall, that was a sign entry detail. And just wanted to know if the council would indulge them in allowing that money to be used the following year. They had some damage done by the storm, that they had to spend money on cleaning up their property, and so they didn't get to where they really wanted to be on the community grant program. So they just asked that if you would be so kind as to extend that for another year, that those funds.
Will you make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do extend those funds for another year.
Second.
Thank you. And if you call for the vote?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Zerker?
I think I have to abstain, since I live there.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
And Mrs. Borin?
Yes.
Thank you. John, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, I'd like to, we had an update on the road, scholar update, and so R-O-A-D-S. Congratulations to our staff that continues for excellence. And as a side note-
Why don't you mention his name, Kathy?
Gary V. Brown.
Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you. Reminded me. And as a side note, tonight, we talked about the electric torch that Dave Thomas carried that's going to be in the artifacts. We should be also proud that John Reiner is the one that handed it off to him during that time. So not only will it be something special for Dave Thomas, but it have as many things with Glenn East Cast that connection to that.
Thank you, Catherine. That was very kind.
Great.
Well, I didn't know you meant this.
That's okay.
No, thank you, John.
Are there photographs? Are those in the archive? I remember the, I remember the white shorts and T-shirt. Am I right?
That was Dave Thomas that had-
No, I think everybody did. It was the uniform.
They issued a uniform to everybody. You brought your own sneakers, though, and sock.
The old basketball style.
Well, good for you, John. Mike?
I have nothing, except that I saw John on television on our Dublin TV several times this weekend, and good job, John.
Thank you.
I thought that was very informative. John was showing us how to juice with his vegetables and other things, so.
It's a continuation of healthy Dublin.
It was continuation of healthy lifestyles and things like that, and I thought John did a very nice job, so.
Well, I have to thank the Joe and John for what they did. They did, they did a great job, and they knocked it out really quick. And it was a one, quick shoot, and not a lot of takes, so. Very professional, so thank you, gentlemen.
I have nothing else.
Okay. I should look quickly at my calendar. I know our next meeting is October 22nd. Is it spooktacular between now and then? It's the 25th, never mind. I can, well, anyway. Get your costumes ready, okay? All right. Thank you very much. I don't have anything. We're adjourned.